I'd like to first have Carolyn Stan join us and be assigned the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the great public, which is standing in our nation, the government of our heart, in the world, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Aaron, can you please do your roll call?
Janie Guy, Michelle? Here. Matt Dyer?
Here.
Hello, Fonky?
Here.
That mine?
Here.
Abby Wilder?
Here.
Okay, was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting on May 6th? Any corrections, deletions, additions?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Okay.
Motion to second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, uh, we do have a public hearing at 7 o'clock, so at that point we'll have to pause the council meeting, but, um, we'll do that when we get to 7 o'clock. First on the agenda, um, we received a retirement letter from Joe Avalos. Um, Joe is, uh, he is the standard for what a great employee is, can be. The guy works his butt off, day in, day out, trains the young people, does anything, anything anyone needs. Um, I don't know how many times he's called me and said, "How'd it look? How'd it look what I did over there?" I said, "Looks good, Joe." It always does. Um, Joe has just been a stellar employee for forty-seven years. So, um, from the bottom of my heart, Joe, thank you. One thing I want to bring up, uh, when I first started this job, do you remember you had one request to me? Do you remember what you asked?
Yeah.
The guys were giving you a hard time about something.
My child didn't work.
No, about what you could wear?
Art.
Tank tops?
Oh.
Joe said, "The guys told me I can't wear tank tops anymore." I said, "Joe, you can wear whatever you want, okay? Get out there and get it done, right?" And, Joe, I appreciate everything you've done for the city. It's, it's been amazing, really has. Um, we do have a, a resolution to read, um, to recognize Joe's hard work over the years and thank him for what he's done for the city.
Number four. Correct. I am, I move to introduce Resolution 2025 dash four by, no, it should be read in its entirety. Second.
Motion to second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Resolution 2025 dash four, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which recognizes Joe Avalos for his years of public service with the City of Decatur Public Works Department. While Joseph Joe Avalos has announced his retirement as City of Decatur, from the City of Decatur Public Works Department, effective May 30th, 2025, after nearly forty-eight years of service with the City of Decatur. And whereas Joe joined the City of Decatur team as a part-time employee on July 18th, 1977, as a part-time summer employee for the Street Department, and he began his longstanding full-time career with the Public Works Department on May 28th, 1979. And whereas Joe has worked with the Public Works Department, primarily in the Street Department, in nearly every capacity during his dedicated career, and whereas Joe was regularly called upon during working hours, nights and weekends, often in hazard or inclement weather conditions to repair water main breaks, clean streets, pile snow, or perform any other job necessary to ensure the city's water and roadways were accessible and safe for the city, for the residents of the City of Decatur. And whereas Joe, affectionately known by coworkers as Mr. Tank Top, for his favorite work attire, has been seen by residents for years, hard at work on job sites, or driving a city truck, street cleaner, mosquito sprayer, from job to job, sometimes from dawn to dusk. And whereas Joe, with his years of experience, has become one of, one of the most versatile, knowledgeable, and capable of public works employees for the City of Decatur. And whereas, because of his strong work ethic, willingness to take on any job necessary, and consistently exceeding expectations and tasks assigned, Joe has earned the respect and admiration of his colleagues and city leaders. And whereas Joe, each day for nearly half a century, rolled up his sleeves, if he was wearing any, and got to work ensuring the City of Decatur's infrastructure was well-maintained for the individuals and families throughout the City of Decatur, and whose retirement will leave a void incredibly difficult to fill. And whereas Joe, in addition to his significant role within the Public Works and Street Department, is also a devoted husband, father, and grandfather, and who in his retirement is looking forward to spending much more time with his family. And whereas, the Decatur Common Council now wishes to rec, acknowledge, acknowledge Joseph Avalos's service to our community, and wishes to express its gratitude for his contributions to the city, and wish him the very best in a well-earned and deserved retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, as followed, resolved. The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, finds that during his years of public service, Joe Avalos has been an exemplary employee, and has served the City of Decatur with distinction, with the, the City of Decatur Public Works Department for nearly forty-eight years. The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, finds that the citizens of Decatur are indebted to Joe Avalos for his dedicated service to the community, and for his willingness over the years to share his exemplary work ethic, dedication, and loyalty, which serves a strong example for all. Resolved. The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, finds that Joe Avalos worked diligently and effectively to promote the safety and well-being of the general public through his commitment to the City of Decatur Public Works Department. Resolved. The members of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, hereby express their deepest gratitude to Joe Avalos, for his concern for and dedication to the citizens of Decatur, for his work ethic and service within the Public Works Department, and for his efforts to maintain and improve the quality of place for the residents of the City of Decatur. Resolved. The Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, hereby expresses its sincere best wishes to Joe Avalos as he retires, and hereby spreads this resolution among the records of Common Council, and hereby directs that a copy be delivered to Joe Avalos in appreciation and recognition of his outstanding public service as a member of the City of Decatur Public Works Department. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you. Everybody, look at.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash four. Second.
Motion to second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Now. Now you can retire.
Since I first started here, I always gave my all to the community, and I really appreciate you for having me here on this team. So, thank you very much. I do appreciate everything you have done for me, and I thank you, my God, and I just get it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for everything, Joe.
Thank you.
We will get you a copy of that resolution, so. All right. Thanks a lot.
All right.
Okay, next we have a matter of record, um, the local office of our new clerk treasurer, Aaron, and your deputies.
Right. You're just making a matter of record?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a matter of record.
Second.
Motion in two seconds. On paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
We really like you. We really like you.
Okay, would you have one quick thing? There's a, we need to make an amendment to the minutes on August 6th. Um, there was some arpa dollars that were paid for, what was it for?
Okay, let me.
It was miswritten in the minutes, and Aaron, correct.
Right, yeah, so, presented and, and approved, correct, it was just, um, marked incorrectly on the minutes. So we just need a ma, matter of record showing that we're correcting these minutes. Um, the original on the minutes was forty thousand and twenty-two dollars, and it should have read forty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. So we just need to make that a matter of record.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Motion to second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Then we have, um, we have CF1 from Chamber Homes, um, they turned it in on time, I think May 14th.
We don't have a copy.
They don't have a representative here, um, there was an email sent, because some of their numbers, you, you guys have a copy of the CF1, I think some of the employment numbers are a little lower than what they anticipated. Um, their representative said the company said it was taking a little longer to ramp up, unexpected, but they also had to revise their estimate due to, uh, the, uh, I think that's the number they say currently, one thirty-two or something?
Uh, right.
Yeah, and they said as of March 31st, they now have a hundred and fifty, and they're planning to add thirty to forty more employees very soon. And they have a big banner that says, "Now hiring." Okay, I just want to clarify that because the numbers were a little lower than what, uh, they put in the, the original ask, so. Any other discussion on this CF1?
I guess I'll keep that for your record. They, I, I like to point out that they estimated that twenty-two dollars an hour, they're up to twenty-eight, oh, two, an hour, is their average salary, and I think that's important to recognize.
Okay, motion to second, any more discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Good. Okay, and then next we do have a couple, um, event applications to, um, to listen to, Nate, you wanna talk? Nate does the fireworks at Homestead.
Just asking for permission to shut down Middle Drive, um, I've got the sufficient amount of insurance already, but we have to renew our insurance on the twentieth, so it'll expire on the twentieth, and then I'll be removing it on the twenty-first, where you show on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I'll start setting up on ten, on the corner of, it's, it's, same, same, same as last year. You'll be good, Tom. Just asking for permission to shut that little street down, and I'll provide the insurance. Who do you want me to do all those copies to?
Jamie.
Uh, yeah, probably Jamie, Capar, yeah. Okay, yeah, you did a great job with fireworks.
What's the date?
Uh, July 28th.
Twenty twenty, thank you.
Any other questions for Nate?
I'll make a motion to approve the event.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, thanks. And then we have, um, New Be, New Beginnings Faith Center on, uh, Tenth Street, Tenth and Dayton, requesting, I need to close, Tenth Street down from Dayton to Marshall, on, uh, they're gonna set up at eight AM, the event starts at ten, ten to noon, on August 6th. It's a Sunday.
It's an outdoor church.
It's an outdoor church service they're gonna have. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Is this a new for them, new event?
No.
I think they've done it in the past, is what Jamie said.
It's been a few years, but they've done a couple of things back since, uh, shooting up.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, a motion to a second? Motion to second, any more discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay.
Mayor, can I take a moment and just address event applications in general, and maybe for Madison Street in particular?
Yep.
So for those who are not familiar with how the application process works for events, or why city council approves any of the event applications, um, in particular with Madison Street Plaza, it's otherwise an open public space. And when it was developed in 2017, um, it had not yet really been considered whether or not it would be rented out or simply used by the city. And in 2020, there was a decision made that it would be utilized and available for rent, for public use. And, um, the purpose for which council is involved is to serve as a, a file oversight for the event application. So the city is essentially a lessor, and makes sure that the, the host, the event organizers, are in compliance with our application process, that they have, um, the requisite insurance, that if there is to be any kind of alcohol served, that they have the appropriate licensing, um, to be able to do that, that public, um, officials related to public safety, emergency response, our public works department have been consulted and weighed in, especially when there are street closures involved. Um, and then once those things have been done, our community coordinator brings that application and information to city council, and that gives city council an opportunity to be informed about what is happening on the plaza. It's an opportunity for the public to be aware of what public events, or what an otherwise public space may be utilized for during a particular span of time. Um, and it gives the public an opportunity to know if an otherwise public space is gonna be closed for a private event. Um, it also gives everyone, both council and the public, an opportunity to be aware of potential street closures, so that they can make arrangements for transportation otherwise. But in, in no way, shape, or form does council weigh in on, um, who the event organizers are, or what viewpoint or content is being considered. This is a, a formal oversight process to make sure that the components of the application process are complied with. Um, I don't know if the council has any, anything that they would like to add in on that, but that, that's generally the event, the event process. And so, there are two other event applications that just came before council that involve street closures. And so, this is the public's opportunity to be made aware that on those particular dates and times, that it's been addressed, that it's been consulted with, that it's known to the public and council, and it's been approved. Um, it's not a matter of who or what is being done, it is simply to make sure that, um, the appropriate officials have been made aware, and the public has a, a chance to be aware of it as well.
Do you have any more agenda items?
Um, did we wanna talk about the fire contracts that we did in the border works? Maybe we wanna?
Um, I don't think so, yeah, I think that's the border works discussion for now.
Then I don't have anything.
Yeah. Okay, we will move on to, so we have the names on people that want to comment. Um, each person can, can have two minutes. Um, if it's the same conversation of a group, and just let one person speak, um, you'll have two minutes, and we will need name and address as you, as you come up to the, to microphone to speak. So, um, the first person on the list is Deanna.
Should we explain, there's no agenda item?
Right.
For tonight, you're just...
We are allowing public comment, but there was, the comments are supposed to be on agenda items for the night, but we are going to allow comment, 'cause there's so many people here, we do, we do wanna hear your opinion, so, um, but I think she pretty much explained the, the, the event application process. So, Deanna Blakely is the first one. So, you have two minutes.
Can you state your?
Name and address, please.
Uh, Deanna Blakely, the address is nine three thirty North State River Line, Decatur, Indiana. And I would just like to say, with this gay pride thing coming up, I'm very concerned about it, and I'm very shocked that the council members and my mayor would approve something like that. Uh, I never, ever dreamed that Decatur would allow something like this, so evil, and so immoral, as to allow drag queens, transgenders, as such, to display their moods and immoral and obscene behavior in the downtown middle of our streets, our beloved Decatur. When I first learned about this news, I thought, what a disgrace to our community. And then I thought, what about the surrounding communities? What are they gonna think of us now? This is gonna be the first time ever of this gay pride festival. And we go to church in Woodburn, Woodburn is about a half hour to forty-five minutes to the north of Decatur. Uh, a couple weeks ago, we were talking and thinking about this pride event coming up, and a respectable elder gentleman come up to me, and he said, "Deanna," he said, "Decatur." I said, "Yeah." He said, "Gay pride festival." I said, "Yeah." He said, "Decatur, Indiana?" I said, "Yeah." He goes, "Decatur, Indiana, and gay pride festival, that don't fit." And I said, "No, it doesn't fit at all." So, yeah. So then, there are several Bible verses that come to my mind too, that flash through my mind. One of them is Proverbs 28:2, and it says, "When there is moral rot within a nation, its government topples easily, but with wise and knowledgeable leaders there is stability." We've seen this both federally, and now we're witnessing locally. Uh, Proverbs 24:10 says, "If you fail under pressure, your strength is not very great." Proverbs 18:30.
Okay, you have two minutes left, thank you, thank you for comments. So we'll go on to the next person.
Okay, I would just like to say, please stop this.
If you want to do another question?
Yes. Name and address, please.
Sean Meyer, thirty-two eighteen Purdy Road, Rockford, Ohio. Um, spent the first eighteen years of my life in Decatur, uh, the last eighteen of my, uh, years over in Salina. I'm a pastor there, Salina is very similar to Decatur, uh, reminds me of my hometown in many ways. About six years ago, we, um, had our first pride event in Salina. They told us that it was going to be family-friendly, uh, and they assured us of that a couple years in, and, and, uh, to make sure it was family-friendly, they had base painting for the kids, and bouncy houses, and all kinds of things to attract the kids in. Uh, they had their event right at the splash pad where the kids frequent in the park. Couple years in, they decided they were gonna add drag queens, I'll show you some of the drag queens that, that they brought into our small town. So what starts as a family-friendly thing, um, this one here happened to have, um, several sexual convictions, um, drug convictions. We did not have their real names, we had their stage names. Uh, they told us that they had to only give their stage names to protect these people from us. Uh, we found out later why they couldn't give their real names, we hired a private investigator, and a lot of them had convictions, mostly prostitution and drugs. Uh, when they weren't dancing for kids, here's who they brought in, these are stickers and gay bars. Uh, these were the, the people who were dancing for our kids in the park. Um, they, they said it was gonna be fr, family-friendly, part of their family-friendly routine included full crotch shots for the kids, uh, also twerking on the pavement, that was part of their, their family-friendly routine. We do have video evidence of all of that, if you have any interest in seeing that, I can, I can make you aware of that, um, show you. There was repeated touching, hugging, kissing, and dancing with the kids, even though they were told not to, we have video evidence of that as well.
Thanks, Sean, that's your two minutes.
That's my two minutes already.
Yeah.
Well, I'd love to show you guys more pictures, but it's gonna hurt your community, it's gonna hurt your kids.
All right, thank you.
Uh, two oh nine Seventeenth Street, Decatur, Indiana. Really, all I really just wanna say about this pride, I've lived in Decatur most of my life, and just the amount of bigotry, just overall bigotry, whether it's racism, sexism, specifically homophobia, in this town, is completely and utterly disgusting. There are so many teenage kids in this town, now, that happen to identify with something, right? And all I have seen in the last few years from this town is just a constant boot on the throat, trying to get them to conform to something that they are not. It is appalling, and nothing against the guy who was just up here, but there is more vile nonsense in the book that that guy is promoting than in any of, any, any pride festivals, okay? You've got, try and stay calm, because I see this, this entire room full of adults, and I hear people clapping about, uh, stopping a festival that is intended to bring a unity to this small group of people, it's a very important group. Again, I really have nothing else to say, to say, but I guess shame on all of you for just allowing bigotry to just be in the town and not pay attention.
Hello, Nikki Ogden, eleven twenty-sixth East Bridge Drive, Decatur, president of Decatur Pride. Um, now we don't have to be mad about the roundabout. You're welcome for that, I know. Um, I just wanted to be here in case there was any questions for me from the city council or anyone else. Um, I just wanna say, now, I'm thirty-nine years old, I've lived in this county my entire life, I look around the room and I see people I belong to church with, I see people that I have worked with, and I know exactly who I am not safe around. You have kicked us out of our workplaces, you have kicked us out of your churches, you have kicked us out of our families, we will not back down. You will not take us out of our community, not a deal. That's all I have, if you have questions for me.
I appreciate you coming to hear opinion and concern.
Yes.
So it takes a lot, it takes guts, and, uh, I applaud you for that, and you've put together a very well-presented presentation on our last meetings, and, uh, I thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And there may be questions, I don't know.
Yes, I know.
We'll see where this involves.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, if people have questions about the event, I mean, there's the people you ask about it. Um, council approves events, not based on content, based on safety. Um, if, again, any event, if there's something illegal being done, if there's a criminal act happening, our police are gonna take care of it. It doesn't matter what the event is, they're there for safety of everyone. So, if you wanna know more about the event, ask the organizers. So. Christine Bright.
Good evening, Christine Bright, one of our high five, Bellbrook Boulevard, I'm gonna have a long one, but, Bellbrook Boulevard, Decatur, Indiana, four six seven three three. Um, I am one of the organizers, I'm proud, proud of that fact, because others have spoken to you, you do have this kind of bigotry. Um, I think it's pretty well-known, we are fun downtown, there's an article in the New York Times in early nineteen hundreds, that's the last, last person we kicked out of town, and that has just transferred over to, um, a form of homophobia more recently. But I wanted to speak right now as an ally to the, um, whole community to say that this is your community, you're welcome here, you are loved, you are accepted, I'm glad you're here, I'm so glad you're here, and you're not alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have to, we have a motion to, um, suspend the council meeting, to go into a public hearing, we'll do what needs to happen to public hearing, we'll come back to council meeting. So don't leave, so.
I'll make a motion to suspend city council. Second.
Motion to second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open, for public hearing.
Second. Motion to second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. So we need, firstly, we need a matter of record that the public hearing was advertised in the paper?
We'll do that when we get back to council.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So we're now in a public hearing on a matter of an additional appropriation of $800,000 to be used toward the purchase of the new ladder truck that was approved last meeting. And would open up comment in favor by the public? Do I hear anyone in opposition of the additional appropriation? Hearing none. That concludes the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to reopen the council meeting. We're going to close the public hearing.
We need a-
Yeah. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting.
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. So now I need a matter of record of the public hearing being advertised. Go move.
Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
And then I need-
Merrick Kaiser?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. But we have a resolution to actually pass the appropriation.
Okay.
So I'd entertain a motion to introduce resolution number 2025-5.
Short title only. Second. Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Resolution number 2025-5, additional appropriation. I make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-5. Second.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Again? All right. Okay. Next, we have Merrick Kaiser.
My name is Merrick. I'm from Fort Wayne, 1300 East Cook Road. But I love the city of Decatur. I have family here. I wrecked my car into a ten-point buck off Pickwood Road this winter. And I just want to say thank you for the work that you do, the day in, day out, the rock minutes. I think there's a lot of things that we don't understand, and you guys are responsible for it, so I'm beyond grateful for that. Over the past couple of years, I have done street evangelism at over thirty-five LGBTQIA plus-related events here in the state of Indiana. And a couple trends that I've learned is that the sin of sodomy, the sin of homosexuality doesn't stay positive. The city of Pendleton, for example, had a very similar trajectory with what is happening here, and they said, "Oh, it won't be, it won't be inane, it won't be inappropriate." And long before, a couple of years ago, I pulled my phone out, I took a video, and there was a fat man dressing as a woman, dragged his blackface for women, gyrating on the lap of the toddler, okay? So this stuff happens. So I just want to encourage you, Christians, the Christians of Decatur, the families that make this community what it is, are hungry for bold, Christian, and conservative leadership. And I've worked a little bit in grassroots politics. If there's a losing issue, look around, guys. This is it. This is your losing issue. The city councilman in Salina, you should, I would encourage you to take note of what happened regarding that. Drag not art, it's a parody of womanhood, it's a mockery of creation. Your duty from God, from the mandate from your neighbors, is to oppose this, to revoke the authorization. Don't hand Decatur over to depraved cultural colonizers. We're watching, we want bold, Christian leadership. And I would just ask, if this was a Klan meeting, or a pedophilic association, or say that we wanted to burn a cross in Madison Square, what would the response be? Perhaps would we maybe think a little bit differently about this? And lastly, I just want to encourage you, you have a duty in God's sight. There's a higher standard. There's a higher authority than the Indiana Constitution. Insofar as it is with God's standard, it's good. But God calls you to uphold the good in Romans, the thirteenth chapter. And so I ask, is this good? The answer is of course.
Mr. Kaiser, thank you for your time. Two minutes.
Tanya Cornet? Tanya Cornet? Is there a Tanya Cornet outside?
Yeah, no, I don't want to.
Okay. Janis Lyman?
I have just one question.
Name and address, please.
Janis Lyman, 110 Marshall Street, Decatur, Indiana, 46733. And my question, my only question is, just concerning everybody's health, is the Decatur prepared for the security of everyone invited? And so what is the plan for who and who is paying for it?
So the organization, the Pride Committee, our organization is paying for it, and we're working closely with Kevin, Police Department, to make sure that the event is as safe as possible.
Is anybody like this Decatur system, paying for tax dollars any time?
No, no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Lundy Cobble?
My name is Lundy Cobble, 6252, 900 North, Virginia, Indiana. I've lived here all my life, and I was asked to sign in, and I said, "No, I'm not going to speak." But you know, last second, I decided to. I appreciate all of you out there on the block for the work that you do. And a little bit I really regret on this, I guess five people have voted for this, if I understood correctly, or excuse me, five people are eligible to vote, if I understood correctly, and one refused, and that was-
That would be me.
And may I ask why?
Because I'm a member of the Pride Committee.
So then I guess when I hear that, I need to make sure that I personally do my due diligence very thoroughly before I go to the voting booth.
Absolutely.
Hi, Candy Johnson, 157 El Perla, Decatur, Indiana. Will you be attending along with your own children to show your support for the license application you approved?
Would you like to know individually? Yes. I will not attend the event. I will state later, I'd like everybody to speak reasons why I think legally they're allowed to rent the plaza and have an event. I won't participate in the event. I don't believe in it. I would never take my children to an event of this nature, and some, I agree, disagree with that. But I don't think, especially when after the fact, we found out there would be drag performances at a kid, at an event that was posed as kid friendly, that's not something I would ever take my children to. Nor did I take them to rated R movies when they were kids, because they're kids. So for me, no, I will not attend.
Well, and I've also chosen the words of God. Romans 1:26-28. Because of them, God gave them over to shameful lusts, even though women exchanged natural relations for unnatural ones. In the same way, the men also abandoned natural relations with women and were inflamed with lust for one another. Men committed indecent acts with other men and received in themselves the due penalty for their perversion. Furthermore, since they did not think it worthwhile to retain the knowledge of God, He gave them over to a depraved mind to do what ought not to be done. Thank you.
We live at 2597 Hogan Alley, here in Indiana. I see here tonight two factions of people, and one faction says the other is bigoted, but I see just as much hatred on the other side from what I've seen spoken. I am a Christian person. We love everybody. God has told us to love everyone. But I feel that your responsibility as leaders of this community should be to protect the decency of the atmosphere for our children. Like Mr. Dyer says, we don't take our children to see this kind of thing because of what we believe. I'm sure the other side doesn't bring their children to church because they don't like what we believe. So they ask us to stay in our churches, then I believe that they should keep their style of living to themselves. We don't care what they do privately, that's their own business. But when they bring it out in the public, it causes harm to young people who don't have the intelligence or whatever, the maturity to decide these things. And that's a proven fact. Thank you.
Maybe Waylon?
Waylon, yes. Good evening, Eric Waylon, 6906 East 900 North, here. I want to say you three Republicans who approve this ought to be ashamed of yourself. And I don't buy the lie of trust, because this was an application process. Have there been other applications denied in the past? Do you know about that?
Not so much.
Well, you know what? To me, it seems like the sexualization of kids would be damn good ground to deny this permit. This is a health and safety issue. If I've ever heard one, you ought to be ashamed of yourself for voting for this. So, you know, I would like to see a public statement from you three elites, you three Republicans, who campaigned on one set of values and then voted another way. Big surprise. I'd like to hear a public statement from you about why you did this. Because you hold the responsibility, you three do, and you could have stopped this thing dead in its tracks. But no. But no, you use the lame excuse, "Well, it's just an application, everybody's entitled to that." I don't think so. I don't think everybody's entitled to that. You think these lewd and disgusting sex behaviors in public, in front of kids, is a right? I don't. Call me a bigot, I'll wear that badge.
I'm Dan York, 610 Upman Avenue, Decatur, Indiana, 46733. I have been in this community for forty-four years, September, I'll start my forty-fifth year. I've been a pastor in this community the entire time. Came here for that purpose. My wife and I served together fifty years in ministry. She went to heaven a year ago, but I'm glad that she's not here at this particular time. I understand, having a meeting this, yesterday, that the application situation is a dumb deal. Is there any recourse, such as having and taking it inside Riverside Center, or anything along that line? Is there any recourse, so it's not on public display? Am I a bigot? No. I've dealt with every kind of person you can think of. I've done forty-four funerals for people I tried to see get out of drugs. So yeah, I'm very familiar with all of this. And I guess I just, I've served in the community, I was Salvation Army director for twelve years, I did the Decatur, helped start the Decatur flower pots downtown, and did that for a quarter of a century. So I've been very, very involved. I've been behind the scenes, not out in the public, loud mouth. I'm in the public all the time, but most of the time I'm a loud mouth, but it's having fun. And this is not fun. And that, no, no reflection on anyone. Everybody has a right to opinion, and good to me, and that's my opinion.
Alicia Martinez, maybe?
No, I wasn't going to speak, but I can.
Okay. It's up to you. It's up to you. Address, please.
803 Offy Garden Street, Decatur. I wasn't planning to go here, but I will. I guess maybe, I'm kind of confused, because we did hear the two pastors that talked about how they did have these, and they were promised there wasn't going to be any kind of lewd behavior, but yes, they have. So I'm wondering, was I the only one that heard that?
No.
So why is it that we're going to trust their word when they lied? And trust me, I have family members that I love dearly, that are gay, that does not mean that just because we have a different opinion, does not mean that we don't love each other. But we are entitled to our opinion, and we are entitled to come and try to fight for our children. So I'm just saying, we did hear already facts from two pastors, quite frankly, that I would trust, and they already said they had promises they weren't going to do these things, and they didn't stick to that. Why are we taking a chance with our children? I guess that's it. Thank you.
I just kind of beg your pardon.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, actually-
Come up front.
I think you'll remember me, right?
Yep.
I called the mayor when we heard about this, and I tell you what, I was really upset. It's like, this is my sister that just talked. We do have family members. And, you know, it breaks my heart to see them in this. I call it a mess. I call it evil. I love my sister, I love my niece, and I'm thinking, Mark, we have to do something, because you know what? I don't know if anybody else is willing to do that. And I don't want, but the Bible says, people that are evil like this will go to hell, and that's the reason that we are trying to pray for our children, pray for our family members that are involved in this, because we love them. And that's what I just want to say, because we love them. It's why we hate to see them involved in all this stuff. Not because we hate. We don't hate them, we hate what they do. We love them, and not, but not what they do, because it is wrong.
Oh, wait, sorry. Yeah, I'll go back to the next one.
My name is Bill Miller, 1234 Master Drive, Decatur, Indiana. I wasn't planning on speaking when you were on the side of the table. This is not a political issue. I've known Matt his whole life, and he knows I'm definitely on the other side of the table with him. This has nothing to do with politics. I have an uncle who was gay, I have a brother who's a gay guy. I went on a Pride parade one day, I don't even know where I was, and it was the most amazing thing I ever seen, but it was beautiful. If someone's got a problem and you think their children are going to turn over just because you walk into an event, keep them home. Mr. Irvin won't let things go on that are lewd and crazy and that he wouldn't think was right. I know he wouldn't. I absolutely know. Gosh, I treated him like crap one day, and he, you know, but you just kind of, I was wrong, I went back and made up for it, but there's nothing wrong with this. I just say, Republicans, you ought to be ashamed, you ought to be proud. You didn't put political onto it. You took an application, you bought it in. You're afraid your kids are going to see something? Don't go! That's all I got to say. Thank you.
I think-
Okay, um, I think Beth something, something, Emile Meyer or something? There's a few names on here.
2405700 North, Decatur, Indiana. I was not aware that anybody was being kicked out of town. I just, I can't see lifting up this destructive lifestyle on a pedestal, giving a festival and exalting or luring affordable children, youth, even adults. And I'm probably the ones that would be there in Bonborough would not be the ones of parents that would keep their kids at home. And I just also can't see, I do not consider it, I'm not proud of Decatur to say that we are a leader in promoting this type of organization.
Gina?
Gina Melcher, 928 Wayneboro Road, Decatur, Indiana, 46733. Past City Council District One Republican candidate on the ballot. When I look at the individuals in this room, it's just a reiteration of why I ran for the spot that I did. Jenny and I are friends, I respect Jenny, I respect that we have a different opinion. It's nothing, nothing against that, we were friends before, we'll be friends tomorrow. While I respect the right of others to live how they choose, I do not support a pride event being held as a public event. I support the freedom for all to express themselves. I believe in promoting events that focus on uniting families and children around shared values of respect, modesty, and tradition. Public pride events sometimes include messaging and displays that I feel are inappropriate for all audiences. I own with my husband a private event center in Decatur, Indiana, that I would be happy to donate for use to hold this pride event, so it is held in a private setting. This is a small-town community with small-town values. My question for the council is, is the council able to revoke the approval of this event?
That's a valid question, but I don't know, I would refer to our attorney. I don't know, I don't have a vote, but I can tell you that.
It's in the public comment section, so it's not a discussion.
Right, but it's been tried across the state and the city has lost every time. I read through a bunch of cases today, and by state law, you can't stop it from.
Then I might again recommend that obviously the individuals in this room that have an opinion either way, whether they're for it or against it, if there is some way that the council could get this event to be held as a pride event instead of on Madison Street in the center. Thank you.
Gentleman, name?
Jennifer Mendoza, 21 East Belmont Road, Decatur, Indiana. I understand that the chamber only approved the application as long as they're filled out correctly and all that, which I appreciate. It is a public festival, there's no reason to be ashamed of how a person lives and loves. We all have our opinion, and I understand that. If you do not believe in what somebody is holding a public festival for, then once again, as others have said, there's no reason for you to sin or bring children. I am a Christian and I lead my life, I try to lead my life, that God has taught us to love everyone, no matter what. And I just wish that everybody would understand that and I don't understand the hate. I'm embarrassed of Decatur because of the way these adults have portrayed themselves in public, on Facebook, that will be there forever, for everyone to see. Not just adults, but your children someday will look at this, maybe some will be proud. That's their decision when they get older. But I would, I just feel ashamed of how all of these adults are tricking each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Manlin Nelson? Marilyn, Marilyn, okay.
331 Mercer Avenue, Decatur, Indiana, 344 North Penn Street, Decatur, Indiana. I just wanted to ask the attorney, to give her one pointed question, can an application be denied?
It's a public comment.
Yeah, you're making comments, it's not a discussion session.
Okay. And then the other thing is, well, I don't care one way or the other. I mean, I think it's pretty dysfunctional for the county or the city to promote something that is against how the foundation of Decatur was founded. I also think that we should not be promoting the agenda of trying to create an environment where our children think that it's cool to dress up as these lewd performers.
Okay, I'm gonna step for one second. Twice now you said the city promoting. Can you explain to me how the city promoted it? Promoting half the definition. And that there was no promotion by the city? Allowing, yes, not promoting.
Semantics?
No.
Okay. So I just think that it's glorifying a very ridiculous event to take place in our city. I could live anywhere in the world and I chose to live in Decatur, Indiana because it was a small-town, with small-town values and a place where I felt safe and that we weren't allowing evil to be seated. And this is opening the door for more evil to get more evil. And I just think that I'm embarrassed of evil.
Taylor Baker?
Taylor Baker, 21 East 700 North, Decatur, Indiana. First of all, I want to thank Matt Dyer. I called Matt a couple of weeks ago just so he could explain to me the procedure of how events were approved. And he answered a lot of my questions. And I wish that others would do the same, get a hold of a council member so you can understand that they can't vote for a thing on necessarily their personal belief. They have to vote according to the law. So, so thank you, Matt, for answering those questions for me. I did notice that a Facebook announcement was originally put out on the Pride Facebook page. And it had the performers' names on it, so I looked up the performers. And then I noticed today that that had been removed, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. That had been removed and an event had been created, but the performers' names were not added to that post. That is not post. However, it did say that there would be a drag show. So I'm not necessarily asking you to stop the festival, I'm just asking you to remove the drag queens. If not, please move the drag queens inside for an 18 and over event. Gina has been obviously generous to donate her place. If it will not be moved inside, I do at least appreciate the time being given on the event so that people can make their own decision if they want to stay or if they want to leave. All I have to say?
Thanks. Danielle? Good. Okay, and Alexis? Maybe Hoppus, unless I'm reading this incorrectly. Chris Takes?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, I wasn't close.
Apologize, I'm liking it, now that I got it. All right, hello.
Address, please.
212 North 600 West, Decatur, Indiana. My two minutes gone?
Yep.
Okay. Seventeen years ago, I got arrested here in the city. I was pretty well-known by some folks, I was pretty embarrassed by stupidity of my actions. Put me in a place, I mean, I was pretty low when that happened. But I'll tell you what happened. Christ came to me and said, "Do it my way or you can keep doing it your way." And I said, "I gotta try your way." And I do that, I do that now by doing things, helping all ministry, helping people who a lot of people don't want to deal with. But I'll deal with them. I know what that feels like, that rejection. These people who are gay and want, why did, where did this pride thing come from? They should be ashamed, shouldn't they? That's what you're all fighting for.
Chris, can you speak to the council?
I have my youngest brother Doug committed suicide. He was gay. He was shunned by the church, you know, I don't want to go all wacky. Shunned, had nobody to turn to, okay. He was gay anyway, right, so it didn't really matter. And I got a son who's gay, who has been incredibly shunned by the church and many in the community. And it's like, what are you doing, people? This is 2025. We're, 1902 sundown town, look it up. You worry about what people are going to think about us, they're never going to stop thinking about us. It's, we're the sundown vote. The signs, the signs, older people know the signs. We're doing it again. Why are we so afraid of signs? Why are we so afraid? Jesus Christ died for our sins. He has us. Why do we think it's okay to find these people and treat them horribly? Why do you all stand up? This is bad, guys.
Okay, that was Manlin to the comments.
Several showed up after the sign-up sheet. I don't know if you, if you're meeting around, but I don't want to not hear from somebody.
Are there any others that want to speak that did not have a chance to sign up?
I didn't sign up, but I would like.
Go ahead, introduce yourself.
My name is Tilly Ida, 1521 East Belmont Road, Decatur, Indiana, 46733. And just basically what we were talking about was the victim tree. In this town, I've grown up through it through my life, and I just don't understand the love of one another. I've seen in this last year or two years, and we go back into the 1962. Basically, this town, religion has had this same stuff that's going on from the beginning of time. We act like just because we don't have an event, that this is not going to happen to your kids. This is the world, the whole big world. This is going on all over the world. You shut the curtains here in Decatur, what are you stopping? You're stopping nothing. This is what is going on and has been going on in the world forever. If you don't want your kids to see it, you have to turn off your TV. If you don't want your kids to hear it, you have to turn off the radio. This is the world we live in. If you want to silence your kids or keep them spicing, do what you're doing. That's what is going to happen. They'll grow up to be weak adults. This is the world.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Hold up.
Hi, guys. My name is 1204 McFarnes, Decatur, Indiana. Based on my appearance, I bet you guys, guess what I'm going to say? Yeah, Matt, you need to bow to the head. You don't want your kid there, don't take them. You don't believe in it, don't go. That's all you need to do. We don't, and I apologize for that. You approved it, but you know what your values are, so you're not going to go. And that's all that needs to happen. If you don't believe in it, don't go. Don't take your kids to it. Don't let them see it. That's all that needs to happen, all that. You're doing right now is telling everybody how much you hate people. That's all that's happening, and you don't believe in it, that's fine, you don't support it, that's fine. Don't tell people how much you're hating them, and that's, that's wrong, that's way wrong. And it's interesting because I, we all remember history, the Beatles. We weren't supposed to listen to Beatles, that was the devil's music. Burn the records. Now they're one of the most famous, greatest bands in history. You can be blind at the time and then history shows you, you could be wrong. Their history could show you you're right, you don't know, but just stop the hate. There are kids seeing this, there are teenagers, there are young kids who are scared, who don't know what they are yet. And all they're seeing is that they're not safe. And that's not what we're supposed to do, that's not what you're, the people who are complaining about this, that's not what they're supposed to be, right? They're saying protect the children. You're not protecting them by showing how much you hate them. So everybody that voted, everybody that's saying it's not our job to say no. Thank you.
All I want to say, oh, I'm sorry, is people going up?
Yeah.
All I want to say is that I don't know about anybody else, but I don't hate, I don't hate.
Dr. Collins? Okay, name and address?
My name is Sebastian Appleby, 403 McBarnes Street. I would say thank you for putting politics aside so we are able to have this event. Obviously, we have the First Amendment for a reason, freedom of speech. A lot of people fight for it and tell us something that they want, as we have seen that with the federal government, and now it's the local government. I was 14 when I knew, I liked the same-sex, and I tried everything in my power to not like it. I had girlfriends, I went to church, I did everything I could, and now I'm 21 with a boyfriend, and I'm happy. And that's all we are asking for when we're doing this event, is a welcoming space for those who don't feel included. Because I was in eighth grade and a freshman, and I was called faggot, I was told to kill myself. And, but by the same people that told me I was sinning because I was gay, even though I wasn't out yet. So again, I just want to say thank you for putting politics aside. We don't have this event to groom children, we have this event to welcome anybody of all ages who may like the same-sex and not feel included in their community because most of the community is against this, as we can see and hear. We're not evil people, you can say all you want that we are evil people, but we are not. We love everybody and we just want to create a welcoming space for those who don't feel included, so thank you.
Tim?
My name is Tim Eller, 1718 West Monroe Street here in Decatur. I never heard one of the people that are opposed to this use the word hate. That was a word that was put into the mouths of the group that's supporting this.
That's right. I never have seen a more welcoming environment than the church. And you say the church chased you out? You are welcome.
Tim, can you please present the council?
Say, Unlee is welcome in our church, but she's going to have to understand that God's word has certain rules that you must follow. Word has certain rules that you must follow. And homosexuality is not one of those items that is allowed according to God's Word. We are welcoming, you know, people in our church all the time, but there are certain rules that we must follow, and that is God's law. So, don't put words in our mouths. You're welcome in our church. Thank you very much for getting to.
I wonder if they ask them if they're gay when they come into the church?
Okay. I just want to make a comment. Some Tim has said, Tim made a comment that if you're in that church, you follow God's law, and I agree with that. As a city council, they follow state laws. Right? And that's their job. Their job isn't to vote-
Do you want this to become a conversation now?
I'm speaking. I think I'm allowed to speak here. It accounts for me.
Just check them, because-
But I'm just, I just want, since you said it, I just want to say that they did, they're doing their job under state laws, and that's what they have to do. No, no, no. If you want, you can say your name and who you are. Please, come up. Sorry, but I appreciate everybody's opinion, and I don't know who you are, so I'm not-
Yeah, my name's Paul Berry, Elizabeth, 4895 East 200 North, Decatur. I've definitely been on the Facebook posts through my pride season. I don't agree with what's going on. Again, I hate nobody. I have many gay family members. I don't approve what's going on. I think it should've been kept in public. I think everybody behind me agrees. Most people should've been kept in public. Now, your question, you, one of you earlier, I think, said that the town is the leasur of the Madison Square Plaza. Is that correct? We have rental properties. We rent and we lease them. We have the right to object anybody that we think is gonna cause problems at that event or at that house. So the city don't have the right to reject any-
There's difference between private business and a public entity.
Okay. For an example, if we wanted to hold a KKK rally, you can't deny that?
It wouldn't even be denied if it's illegal in nature, by law.
Okay. All right. So anything-
Any crime-
Even if it's legal by law, will be approved at the Madison Square Plaza. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, they have boxes to check on their, on the application-
Okay. So as long as it's legal by law, it will be approved at Madison Square Plaza in Decatur?
Yeah, and if laws are broken, that's why we have police.
Okay. That's all I know.
And I want to thank you, Paul, because you did come to me and talk to me.
Yeah.
Rather than just the Facebook stuff, you came and talked to me.
And I didn't hear anybody on the side say anything about hate. You know, most of us probably have gay family members. I have several. I just don't agree with it.
I just want to say, instead of the stuff, you came and talked to me, and that's how it should happen.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
So are we allowed to ask questions or no?
What's that?
Are we allowed to ask questions or no?
Did you have, does some of your two minutes left, maybe?
Yes, but when you asked the question, you said that it will be a discussion.
Agreed.
It's a public, it is a public comment section. It is to counsel how they choose to handle that.
Okay. So am I allowed to come back and ask a question?
I'd like to hear your question.
What's the question, Gina?
We, I mean, my daughter is a lesbian, okay? I am not against the fact that this is the way of life. I don't agree with it, but I love my daughter with all that I have. My question is, there's obviously people here that have concerns. What can we do as a city to make this better? I'm not asking to cancel the event.
Don't go.
But it's not just an issue of not going. I'm not going to go. But it's an issue of, we have a lot of pride for the city we live in. What can we do as a city to fix this? Because obviously, people are upset.
Build a wall.
Okay, now, we're really good with the rest of our council meeting, with nothing left on the agenda, pardon my head.
My question when I asked them there, is, are you prepared, how are, how are you prepared for something could happen because of hate?
They hired, they have hired security, and we also have officers on duty, extra officers on duty.
Want me to answer that?
You know what? If you have questions about that, you can ask the organizers out in the lobby. So, we need to go to the end of our council meeting. Pardon my head. Mayor, Kevin, I'm sorry. Let me go through department heads real quick. Okay. Kevin, you have anything? Jeremy, you have anything?
It's a reminder of the Five Points Project starting June 2nd. Kevin and I are working on some, this thing is, things to allow better phone traffic. We'll have that information out shortly.
Okay. Kurt, you have anything? Karen? She didn't see Joe. Karen? Aaron? Jeff? Okay. Council. Matt, you have anything?
Some listening, this is a great listening session and discussion. I had a local pastor, Ken Hoag, come to me this week and invite me to the Decatur Ministerial Association. I saw Ken earlier. I don't know if he's still here, but I wanted to personally thank him. There he is. Myself and Abby Wilder went to that meeting, along with Dan York and about 15 local pastors, mostly from Decatur, a few from Burn, and we had a great discussion about what this event is, what this event isn't, and how that group of pastors planned on addressing it. Some plan on addressing it by ignoring it, let the event go on. Some thought it might be a good idea to protest the event. Some thought it might be a good idea to come to city council and give their opinion. And some were somewhat baffled as to how this happens in a public square. So, I gave an example of, when I, I've been the longest member of council, nearly 15 years ago, we have the Riverside Center that we ran out for the monthly flea market. That's handled by the Adams County Coin Club. They in turn rent out booth space. And a booth was set up, and the organizer described what was being sold as satanic stuff. She didn't agree with it, thought it was inappropriate, went to them, asked them to take it down, and please go away, to which they did. The next week, the city was sued, and it cost the city tens of thousands of dollars, because they have the right in a public space to give their opinion and freedom of religion, whether I like it, whether anybody likes it. This plaza, and in disagreement with Mr. Wayland, we do have to follow state law. It's a public space to rent. Do I, now, it's currently in legislature, discussion, is drag performances in public something that should be permissible by law? As of today, it is. Next year, it might not be. So this whole discussion could be different. Does Gina have every right to say, "I would prefer in my city for a public drag display to be indoors"? Yes, you could ask the event organizers to do that, and they might find that appropriate. They might not find that appropriate. They have the right, as of today, to have that in a public space. It was said over and over that Mr. Gerber, our police chief, is in charge of security for everybody. We all want to be safe if there's gonna be an event.
We all pay attention.
Yep. They do, Chris. But Mr. Miller said that this is not political. To hell if it isn't political. Mr. Wayland called me out for being a terrible Republican for allowing something in a public space by state law.
Sexualization of children.
Yep. That's the opinion of some of his friends, that it is the sexualization of children. Others say that politics isn't local. Well, sure it is. Who's putting this event on? Your newly-elected leadership of the local Democrat Party. The chairwoman is Cap Rogers. Christie Bright's the secretary, Molly Cochran's the treasurer. Three of the four people that presented this event to us are your newly-elected Democratic Party. Barbara Gable never brought events like this to Decatur. She was the chairman for many, many years, she was a person. So throw the politics around all you want, but it's not a political, it is and isn't a political event. Who's bringing it to your community? And then again, if you don't want to go, don't go. I choose not to go. We were asked point-blank, are we supporting this? No, the city is not supporting this. The city is not promoting this. Yet I believe by state law, we have to allow it, whether I like the state law or not. It's irrelevant. And I'm glad some of you called me personally. I called out a local pastor, a former local pastor, who wanted to blast us over and over on social media, and put us in a corner, and what is the police gonna do? What is the city attorney gonna do? Ask them. And if you really want to know what this event is or isn't, I think you should be able to ask the organizers of the event. So I appreciate you all coming. I appreciate your opinion, but I've heard enough. I want to give mine.
Not at this topic, but I do have someone within my district that would like a speed study done on Cherry Lane. There are currently no signs posted there.
Jeremy, is Jeremy still out there?
Jeremy Gilbert.
Yeah. Do you know what speed is on Cherry Lane? Is it, if it's not posted, it's probably 30 within a city. Right. In the way, in the way the, way the law goes, Abby, if, if somebody wants a reduction in speed, we can do five miles an hour without a speed study. If they want to go more than five miles an hour, we have to have a speed study. So if they would like to come to council and ask for 25? That could be done. They can come and ask. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I think 25 would be reasonable for Cherry Lane.
Right. So, yeah, just, they'd have to come and ask before council, after that change.
Dr. Nelson, I am happy to talk with you after, like, after the meeting, and you can answer any of the questions that you have for me, okay? All right.
Okay. Nothing else from council? Motion to pay the claims?
I'm moved.
Motion's second, on paper?
Aye.
Throw the same sign.
And a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's second, on paper?
Aye, aye.
Throw the same sign.